I'd like to call the Tuesday, January 3rd meeting of the Monmouth City Council. Estebas, to call the roll, please.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson is excused. Counselor Milligan?
Here.
Counselor Schaefer?
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Here.
Thank you all. I have two quick items tonight before I step aside. The first is the consent calendar, which consists of minutes from the council meeting and council work session on December 6th. If I could have a motion to approve those?
Move approval of both.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, in favor.
All right.
Both. Hearing none, we'll approve those two sets of minutes. And I actually jumped in and signed them for Phyllis already, so that's taken care of. The only other item that I have tonight, I've come to really appreciate over this ten years Steve's knowledge of how this whole thing works and how city government works. I have a feeling that you probably know the Charter better than Wayne does.
No.
But, so, I was thinking about, you know, as people would ask me what mayor duties are, and I came up with this quick little list of two and realized that really there was a third one, too. So, I just wanted to pass along a couple items to you to help you with these two things. The first item that mayors in Monmouth are in charge of is, you have to be a pretty face for the city when one is needed.
Okay.
Okay? And...
How do you manage that?
We, I know. I paper bags go a long way. So, one of the things I really had a blast with was the number of dedications and ribbon cuttings and all that we had. And there was one in particular, and that was in the U.Substation for the Power and Life. And I was given this little item, okay? And it just comes out on the closet shelf, and I thought, Steve needs a hard hat, because he's going to be doing more of these dedications. We've got the Power and Life headquarters coming up and so on. So, for you, a hard hat.
All right.
Now, the second thing you get to do is have this funny little hammered meetings. And, you know, it's really useful. It makes you get loud noises and so on. But every now and then, trust me, you'll wish you had a little more firepower than that, so. I got you that. But, the most important duty of the mayor in Monmouth, according to at least some townspeople, happens but once a year. And I can't really bring it, so I brought a representation of your duties on the floor in the lobby. I want you to enjoy all of your duties, but especially the duty duty, because it really is fun how the citizens of this community enjoy the mayors and the managers out there taking care of that job. It's really, truly fun. So, with that, I will step aside and let Phyllis do her thing.
I go to you.
All right, so I need Mayor-elect Milligan. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
I, Steve Milligan.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Oregon?
Of the State of Oregon.
The Charter and ordinances?
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Monmouth?
Of the City of Monmouth.
And that I will?
That I will.
Well and faithfully?
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties?
Perform the duties.
Of Mayor?
Of Mayor.
Of the City of Monmouth.
Of the City of Monmouth.
The best of my ability?
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your honor, oral Tom Byron, you're up. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
I.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the State of Oregon?
Of the State of Oregon.
The Charter and ordinances?
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Monmouth?
Of the City of Monmouth.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Well and faithfully?
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties?
Perform the duties.
Of City Councilor?
Of City Councilor.
Of the City of Monmouth?
Of the City of Monmouth.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
There we go. A little arranging here.
I have to wait up here and listen.
Yeah. So, John, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you.
So, as mayor and on behalf of the city, I'd like to present this to you. You're years of service, so I'll read it. It says, John Oberst, Mayor, 2007 through 2016. He was on the Planning Commission, 2003 through 2006. Drafting and Safety Commission from 2000 to 2003. Recognition of your hard work, wisdom, and countless contributions rendered while serving as the mayor of Monmouth. During your tenure as mayor, Monmouth experienced a time of great progress. You played a critical role in the progress and leave a legacy that will be enjoyed by Monmouth citizens for many years to come. Thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Monmouth.
Thanks, Steve. And I've said it before, but I'll say it again. It's the staff and it's the folks who sat in these six chairs up here over the last decade that really pushed this agenda of change in town and building the amenities for the people of the city that we have managed to put together. So, Steve, you know, you ought to be on here too, because it's everybody's contribution to that. The councils, despite the change in membership over this ten years, have been seamless in their desire to see Monmouth push forward, and I hope that you all continue that. And that's, yeah, I appreciate it. And thanks so much to the community and to all of you for being here tonight, and I appreciate it. All right, John?
Jesse, come on down. So, as mayor, on behalf of the city, I want to present this pack to you. Jesse Schaefer, I better hang on to it while I read it, since I didn't memorize it. You've been on City Council from 2012 to 2016. The recognition of your hard work, wisdom, countless contributions rendered while serving as a Monmouth City Councilor, thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Monmouth from the Mayor and City Council and City Staff.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'd just like to say thank you, just like John said. None of this is done by ourselves. I took a chance and ran. I didn't have to run against nine folks like everyone here did this round. Thank goodness. But, I did get an opportunity to serve the community in a capacity that I never thought was possible. There are a ton of people to thank. Obviously, Steve and the rest of the council. Seespoons, who was here earlier, is the one that really kicked me to come to meetings on a regular basis. And then, after coming to meetings over and over and over again, I decided to run and got the opportunity to be in the conversation and get to help lead some great projects that were facilitated by a great staff. We have one of the best city managers around. He's done some amazing work, and if you haven't noticed, then you should just drive down Main Street. And anything you see has a lot to do with the council. Scott really putting it, putting it all together and managing it in a very, very efficient way. To all the department heads, I want to say thank you for all your access, all your, you know, all your help. And you guys, once again, are another group of leaders in our town that are second to none. So, I encourage anyone, any of the youth out there, to really, really come to these meetings and really reach out to your city leaders and to be a part of the conversation, because the conversation can't be had with just, you know, the, you know, older typical folks that are able to do this. And the reason I have to step down is because of the great changes that have happened in my personal life since getting on council, which was having two, I have two daughters now. I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old. Apparently, it's very difficult to find time every other week for three hours, which is a bare minimum that I've, and so it just was, I just really wanted to put more into it. And so, stepping aside, and hopefully, you know, you guys will take up the slack. And I really, really appreciate this opportunity from each one of you. And the biggest thank you goes to my beautiful wife for letting me do this for so, so long. She's the one that really said, stop worrying about world politics and go fix something or try to fix something in your own community. So, hopefully, I helped fix a few things or at least made it a little bit better, and I think I did. So, thank you, everybody.
All right, so now we're at time for reports, and I get to make the first one. So, one of the items of business that we need to take care of that wasn't previously on the agenda is our council president. The council president, basically, their responsibility is to step in when I'm unavailable. So, I want to open this for nominations for council president. I've sprung this on you without much. Currently, Darren is the council president.
Yeah, I'd nominate Darren. He's our senior, senior counselor, and in times when he stepped in before he's done a very effective job, that would be, would be my recommendation.
So, the nomination for Darren, any other nominations?
I nominate John.
So, I don't want to do this.
I would go down the, count each one of these, have to be recorded votes, so I'd just ask for Silvernagle or Carey, for each member to vote.
Okay. So, Darren.
John Carey.
Based on the wisdom of John Carey, Mr. Silvernagle.
Silvernagle. Silvernagle.
And I guess it's going to be Silvernagle.
All right. So, it's four to one for Darren. So, congratulations, Darren.
Thank you.
I think you know what you're about to step into, so.
Pretty much, I think.
All right. The second item that I wanted to talk about, at the last meeting, there was a person who brought up information about the City of Monmouth looking to becoming a sanctuary city. We're going to set that into a work session in the near future, and we'll keep the people who brought that up apprised of what we're doing. There's, currently, the county is a sanctuary county, and Monmouth Police follow that same policy. So, currently, we're just looking if we actually need a specific policy for the city or how that will work, but we're going to bring that to a work session, and we'll let you know that. Then the third item that I wanted to mention for the council is that we're going to do board and commission appointments. Oh, this is, for the board and commission appointments, I've got a few applications, and I'll be going over those in the next few days. And then, at the next council meeting, I'll present those. In between times, when I get the information about the person that I'm, who's filled out the application, I'll go ahead and fire off the information of their application and what I feel about the person or where we're going with the person. So, that'll be coming up in the next little bit before the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment back on those, if we have some firsthand knowledge of the individuals? Would you like some response back?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I want it to be an open process. I don't want just you guys to feel like I'm just not including you until the vote happens. And so, with that, we'll move on to the reports from council representatives. So, Counselor Silvernagle, Senior Advisory Board?
Yes. Senior Advisory Board met on December 19th. See, at that time, they were struggling a little bit with the Wizard of Wonderland, so it was postponed, and they're going to reschedule it for sometime in January. The building is virtually complete, and I mean, they may have keys now. At the time, they didn't have keys. And working on the last of the punch list, so it's about done. And I might re-announce, I announced, I think, at the last meeting, the open house is going to be January 19th from 11 to 2. See, mark your calendars if you have an order. And that completes my report.
And the Wizard of Wonderland is this Thursday?
This Thursday. Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Carey, by hand.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the MyNet Board met on, on December 22nd. The primary agenda items were to review the audit conducted by, you know, the usual auditors, Grove, New York, Swank, and Tom Glowgal was the one that made the presentation for us. And it was a, you know, very positive report in almost all areas. That, I believe, was forwarded to you all. You should have seen a copy of that. Scott sent that forward. And we also reviewed the financials for the month of November. Those two were positive. We think we're establishing sort of a new norm, a new anticipated consistent revenue flow that's up considerably from a year ago. And then, we also spent some time in executive session reviewing and discussing the strategic plan. Now, councilors that have been here and those of you that have been paying attention have been talking about the strategic plan for some time. There's been some fits and starts. However, it is to the form where it's gone to the Financial Advisory Committee, back to staff, and then to the MyNet Board, and we're in the process of review of that right now. Sort of our internal open comment period ends Friday, and, you know, so we're scrubbing it for direction, for appropriateness, for presentation nuance, you know, all of the things. But it will become sort of the working document for the next five years that, that the company will follow. So, and I'll have to say, and it will all come to the council when it gets to be sort of in pretty, well, in final draft, final form, actually. And I think you'll be impressed with the detail of it and the action steps and the tactics and, you know, the goals, the strategies, the tactics, the whole thing. I think it'll be good. It's just, I wouldn't say it's fun to read, but it's, it's enlightening. It's enlightening. We meet, actually, I can't, I didn't bring my agenda, so the date is January. We'll talk again before then, but I want to say it may be January 19th. But, that will be, I'll get that information now. And that concludes the report.
All right, thanks. Any community announcements, if the councilors would like to make a swirl? All right, Scott?
Yep. Just a few items. Number one, we're having the shift of the Chamber of Commerce. If you saw the news that Jean Love has stepped down, she had an extremely good job for the Chamber. And we have a new person named Ryan King Sella. He actually set up, he's a Western graduate, and he set up an internet marketing business website, so we have a new person there, and I think really plays with that higher, so we're looking forward to that. Second one, very good news, we got the Cycle Oregon grant that we submitted, and that's for a couple repair stations. So, one will be probably by the police station on the bike path, the second one will be at Main Street Park, somewhere probably near the amphitheater. And it was really nice, we had one member came up with kind of the idea, knew about it, another member did extremely good job on the grant application itself, and then we got that funded, so we'll be getting the word out pretty soon, and so that's, that's really exciting.
Scott?
Can I ask a question real quick? What, what does this bicycle repair station consist of?
Yeah, it's actually really neat. It's a, it's like a, like a pedestal, and then you actually have a rack where you can put your bike into, like your repair shop, and so you have a place to put it. And then, then basically, it's all the tools that you would need, but they're on cables.
Gotcha.
So, you can't take them, so then you can just take them off, you know, and then just kind of use the tool, do whatever you need to with your bike, and then it'll actually have an air pump on those, too.
Okay, so it's a permanent structure?
Yeah. It'll be very much a permanent structure. And how, how the world works nowadays with GPS and everything is theoretically, your bike's sounding weird, you can go, oh, there's one five miles ahead in Monmouth, and then try to make it to the repair station and get your things done. And then, and obviously, we'll make a note that there's a bike repair shop right here, too.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah. And then the third one is the old police station. Remember, we got a kind of one bid to purchase that, going through kind of iterations on planning, trying to figure out how to get that done. They need to apply for a couple variances to make the project go, and we're about, almost ready for that application to get put in, so we hopefully should have some action pretty soon.
All right, thanks. Now's the time, if there's any citizens who would like to make some comments or let their concerns be heard, now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the business agenda. And item one is to adopt the marijuana enforcement regulations resolution.
Yes, so what this is, is we have, we put in a tax on marijuana, and so at this point, we actually don't have any facilities, but when they do come, we have the option of doing our own enforcement or having the state do the enforcement. Opt to let the state do it, a lot more streamlined, better for the business, too, because it only, you know, one party they have to deal with. It's kind of a rapidly moving area. When we passed everything, they hadn't figured out how they were going to deal with, with penalties, non-compliance, not getting forms, you know, submitted ahead of time in manner, remittances. And so, what the state did come out with was an interest if you have, you know, your back before you're supposed to, any kind of compliance issues. And so, what this resolution would do would just further link our rules with the state rules and just make sure it's all tied together nicely. So, if you could go ahead and pass this resolution, and then that would go into effect, and whenever the business shows up, we'll be right in sync.
And just following what Scott said, this is standard language, the Department of Revenue has recommended for cities to adopt, does sync local enforcement with their collection system.
And so, this would be resolution number 1828. And do I have a motion for that?
Unless there's any discussion.
Is there any questions?
Well, I will move approval of resolution 1828, providing for the enforcement and collection of Monmouth marijuana taxes and authorizing interest and penalties for non-payment.
Second?
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion at this time? Phyllis, roll call on this.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
Aye.
Counselor Spanky?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkle?
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously. And our next item of business is the whistleblower policy.
Yeah, thank you, man. The, what this is, in 2016, the State of Oregon passed a statute saying you have to essentially have a process, an employee can report concerns about the operation, kind of commonly known as a whistleblower. And so, what the policy does is actually was a draft that was produced by our insurance carrier to get the proper language in place. And so, what it does is establish that the process, who you'd report to, how you'd report it, and then the key things in there also is that then there's no retaliation if you do. The idea is that someone should be safely be able to do that. That also could imply if they had a congressional committee or someone else wanted a contact. And so, what this does is it goes through the process, tells how you report, where you go. An interesting one that was a specific note is, there's definitely concerns in legislature that then employees could just really use this as a weapon, and they could start deferring action about their own performance, or just, they could just start being somewhat of a nuisance, and they, and they called it out. Obviously, there's nothing definitive, because you can't. But the idea is that if you've got a performance issue and you, you submit like a claim here, those are separate. They're separate, and then likewise, you know, if you're submitting a claim that it's a terrible work environment because we use blue pens, they prefer black pens, that's not going to qualify. So, this policy goes into effect, and then separately, just to note, in our own personnel rules, there's already a path, if you have a really an employment-related question, if you don't think that, you know, a process is going right, you're not being paid correctly, that's a separate, separate employment-based claim that you can make under that stipulation. So, with this code going into effect, you'll be in compliance with state statute.
I have a few questions. Do we have a definition of retaliation?
It's broad.
Does it expire?
No. Oh, no, no, actually, it could be, it's, it's a whole range of change in, you know, work environment, change of assignments.
You lose your parking spot?
It could be your parking spot, and it's parking you next to, you know, the copier machine. And also, another interesting one that's evolved over the years is just shunning. You know, someone makes a claim, then all of a sudden, everybody stops talking to them.
So, who decides whether or not an employee has been retaliated against?
Yeah, I think in this case, the employee would need to bring that forward, and then we would work through our chain. Definitely, it'd be my job as the administrator to determine if that happened. And obviously, if they didn't like my answer, there's steps they can take.
Be on that to the court, go to a view or elaborate of these trees, yeah.
Okay. Another question, what about if an employee is offered a reward for not reporting something?
That's interesting.
That really doesn't come under whistleblower. That may come under an anti-fraud policy or something like that, but it wouldn't come under whistleblower policy. Maybe something to think about, and I'm not sure if the city has a policy on that. That really would come under more an anti-fraud than whistleblower. Whistleblower really gets at retaliation against an employee for doing some protected activity or statement, yeah, but not on the other side of it.
Okay. Okay. So, if you find out there's something going on and you're called into the supervisor's office and said, we'd like to offer you a golden parachute retirement, that wouldn't fall under this. Okay. And then, an employee who, say for instance, drives a city car, notices the brakes are grabbing, and then says to his supervisor, I'm not going to drive that, that particular car because I think it's unsafe, that would fall under the OSH rules rather than retaliation or whistleblower?
That could fall into multiple areas.
Okay.
Yeah, but they really could, they really could cause a safety issue, frankly, if it was a union employee, they could go through that process.
Okay, so if an employee says, I think there's a health and safety issue here, and I'm calling you on it, and the employee then is retaliated against, and is told, well, you're going to drive the 1978 pickup truck over here if you don't like this car. Somebody decides whether or not that's retaliation? Okay, all right. And in, in recording this, there's a place here where the person, the whistleblower, can discuss the activities of a public body with a legislative assembly, and you've got a list of things here. How about the press? Are they, are they allowed to go to the press?
It's not as protected, because at that point, you're just kind of making a point. I think the idea is, like, if you have information you think is really important, and like, you feel you need to go outside the organization, you could, for example, call the Attorney General Office and say, I, I need to tell someone something. The idea is you're supposed to get it to a more official representative that can actually, you know, take action.
Okay. So, if it's the supervisor, or maybe there's collusion between the supervisor and the department head?
And at a different level to maybe look at it is, employees have amazing free speech rights anyhow, including talking to the press, so at the moment, they could.
Okay. And they talk to the press, and then they find the next day that they've been moved into the windowless cubicle?
Then they, and they decide whether they want to, you know, report that.
Okay.
See if they have some action taken.
Okay. And you've got under exhibit one here, reports of unlawful or improper conduct. Should that be reports by employees? Will need to be kept confidential by supervisors?
Why'd you point to that?
Under exhibit one?
Top of page two?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the idea there is that it's an incredibly tricky area. Because the, you'd want to kind of deny maybe somebody's ability to have some retaliation happen. But it's really hard for someone, they have to say something specific, and more than likely, it's going to be pretty easy to figure out where that came from. You know, that's where, an employee can't just come in and say, I know they're wasting money over there. You know, that's not going to help anything. So usually, by the time someone, so the idea is you try to help the person, but then usually where the conversation goes is more than likely, you know, we will do what we can to keep this low-key, but more than likely, you'll be identified. And then the employee needs to make a decision at that point.
Yeah, it's almost stated in the outburst, but to the extent that they're consistent with law, it will be kept confidential. But the fact is that there are general evidence for these complaints ultimately to become public. And so it's not a blanket guarantee of confidentiality. But if you look at, that paragraph is in the context of the preceding paragraph, the bottom of page two, which talks about reporting options. And it's designed to at least inform the employee that the, the point is not to tattle on them to the city manager or to an department head. And to the extent that reports can be kept confidential, they will be. But to the extent that the investigation is required, probably the employee reporting that, their name will probably come out.
And you know why that's a problem? Finding another job. If you've been identified in the public, in the public marketplace or the place of employment, that you're a whistleblower, it's going to be harder to find another job.
But unless some state law provides protection, anonymity, or confidentiality, we wouldn't do that as part of our city policy.
Okay, okay. And can you tell me what an affirmative defense is?
That is, well, we have the counsel on the, the lawyers on the, on the city council. That is a particular type of defense if an action is brought against you. You may deny that you engaged in a conduct that was alleged. And you will also, you also have an affirmative defense, which is not just a denial, but a statement of right or some privilege or some basis that authorizes your conduct. And that goes beyond just a denial of wrongdoing, but in fact, a statement that my conduct was authorized. And you can use that as an affirmative defense beyond just a general denial of the conduct that's alleged.
Okay.
And maybe the example, let's just say it's the building official, and someone says, I don't like growth anymore, so don't issue more permits.
Uh-huh, right.
And he would say, no, I've been charged with, if someone meets requirements, they get a permit. And I'm doing my job.
Okay. I have a couple more questions. The defense only applies in situations where the information disclosed was lawfully accessed by the reporting employee. Do most of the employees here know what that means? Would it include recordings or photographs?
I think the simplest level is it's something that you'd have access to in the course of your job. If you're an employee from the first department, you get yourself into the police station, you're fishing through and finding things, you weren't supposed to be there in the first place. That's what actually wasn't really lawful or acceptable. So if it's in the normal course of your duties, you've got access to it, then that's just, that's just part of your job, and that'd be fine.
Okay.
Scott?
Yeah, I have a big question about, just from the city's point of perspective, structural. You talk about the employee reporting options. And I didn't see anything in here about human resources. Are you essentially the human resources person for the city?
We have a shared responsibility, essentially. So they could go to like the finance director.
Okay.
If they had that. In some cases, then our person that does payroll, they do a lot of the intake for the employees.
Right.
Sometimes, you know, contacts come in there. And we kind of set it up so you don't, usually you go to your supervisor. You've also got the department head. But then, yeah, there'd be a central, we wouldn't mind if it came in, if there's a concern, if it came in to kind of any of the three people that do HR for us.
Okay. But there's no specific HR person?
Right.
Because in most of these policies, actually, you have mentioned specifically human resources.
But, yeah, we're, we don't have a designated person. It scares some people.
So then this would be resolution number 1829? Do you want a motion?
Move to adopt resolution 1829, a resolution adopting a policy to protect employees of the City of Monmouth who report reasonable concerns about city operations.
May I raise a couple of concerns before we get to the motion?
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion?
Yes. On page one of exhibit one, the four bulleted points, I just note that, just for consistency, on the first bulleted point, where it says rules or regulations, those should probably be in the singular, because the others are in the singular. But then, more significantly, as we get to the other bullet points, it talks about raising issues of gross waste of funds and then substantial and specific danger to the public health. And my concern about those qualifiers is that it puts the employee in a very difficult position of wondering whether they've reached that threshold and therefore have the whistleblower protection. I think as a matter of city policy, we would rather err on the side of them bringing lesser complaints as opposed to withholding greater complaints. And so I would remove the word gross, so that it would be mismanagement, waste of funds. If somebody's wasting $10 a week, I want to hear about it. I certainly don't want somebody thinking $100 a week isn't gross. You know, so that, all that does is limit the confidence that the employee has that their revelations meet the standard for protection. And then substantial and specific danger, same thing. You give me any 10 lawyers and ask them what substantial and specific means, and you're going to get 10 different answers. I would rather see it say, mismanagement, waste of funds, abusive authority, or danger to the public health resulting from action of the city. So take away those threshold qualifiers. When we get to the third bullet point, that just restates the second half of the second bullet point. So I think that could be deleted. And then I have a question. I know I'm throwing a lot of things out here. It says the fact that a recipient of government services is subject to a felony or misdemeanor arrest. Excuse me, is there some state law that says that persons with warrants can't receive city benefits?
You know, just kind of generally, to your comments here, if you're inclined to modify this part, this part came verbatim from City County Insurance Services, who drafted this as the policy for their insureds to adopt. I would, if you're inclined to do anything in this area, particularly with those adjectives, which are their adjectives and not ours, I would probably be inclined to table this and go back to City County Insurance Services and make sure that we're not getting out of sync either with any coverage issues or state law that they've spent more time on than we have in this. This has gone out to all, I think, all public entities that are insured by CCIS, and this was drafted by them. We already fussed with some of the grammar, but I didn't deal with that language just because it came out of CCIS. If you want to look at that as possible modifications, as well as the fourth bullet, I would, I think, recommend that you probably table this and then give us a chance to talk with them to see if we're creating any problems by changing the thresholds here for protection.
I think it would be, just, both councilors, Mr. Mayor, I think it's worth tabling, because this is going to define the city's policy on whistleblowing. Do we want to have a city where we encourage it vigorously? Or do we want to just have a minimum level of whistleblower protection?
So I think if that's the case, I think a motion to table would be ordered. You can take a vote on the motion to table.
I would like to. I would move to table resolution number 1829.
Don't we need to vote on the grievance?
No, a motion to table takes precedent. This would be to table to the next meeting.
I'd just like to make a comment before we do that. And I understand that Counselor Stanky is saying there. I think, though, that the language in here, having seen a number of these things, what it does is it elevates, it elevates the level of egregiousness of what's going on so in order to not encompass anybody who complains about a faulty stapler that could pose a danger if I use it incorrectly. You know, it emphasizes the really big things so as not to lump everybody in there. And you are going to have, and I've experienced this firsthand, you're going to have people who will seek refuge under this type of policy here. So I think that's, that's why they elevate this to the level of, and you're right, you can argue, you do make it subjective. But I think it, I think it does at least emphasize the fact that when you complain, in order to be a whistleblower, when you complain, you have to be complaining about something that's legitimate, not some ticky tack thing that you can use in order to shield you from being disciplined for some other issue that you might be facing. So that's, that's my perspective on it.
I think this is probably not intended to prohibit employees from complaining. It's more to prevent retaliation against them for complaining. So I think everybody who works for the City of Monmouth can say, tomorrow morning, I've got a chromie stapler, and nothing will come of that unless the next day they come to work and find that, you know, there's, you know, somebody's messed up the top of their desk and formatted their hard drive on their computer and that sort of thing.
Well, what it does is it defines protective behavior, legally protected behavior that you can't be retaliated against.
Retaliated against, yes, yes.
So if somebody complains about a stapler that's not really dangerous, that's not going to fall under the category of protected behavior.
But if the employee's retaliated against for that?
If I may ask, just to see if there's a second to the motion?
Yeah, so there was, there was a second to the table, correct?
Actually, Mr. Mayor?
There's not been a second to the motion to table.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay.
I would just say, just consideration here is that, I think Byron's absolutely on track with the discussion. The whole point is, and Tom, is that it's really something substantial you use as policy. Any other reason, you just go to your supervisor and say, hey, I have a concern about something. We've already got that mechanism in place. We're good. The substantial part is, so it really is something important before you elevate and go to HR or the city manager. Otherwise, I am going to be getting comments, there's a slight crack in the sidewalk, it's a public safety issue. We bought a box of pens, I found on Amazon for cheaper, I want to report that. I'm not really interested in having all the department heads bypassed in their normal operation and having employees coming directly to me. I would really much rather have a higher threshold.
My problem is that although adjectives are used in this current version that the state, what agency was that?
It's our insurance carrier.
Insurance, insurance company.
They've given us meaningless adjectives. They've given us adjectives that, as I said, you know, no group of lawyers, whatever precisely, they're on, much less.
And actually, the derivative is the State of Oregon. That's their law.
Well, it.
So that's where it came from. And the idea here is you can't, you're never going to get that specificity in something like this.
And so I would err on the side of too many complaints and as opposed to squelching legitimate complaints. There is no protection for the employee in reality if he or she fears that she's not reaching a threshold and she doesn't have an objective threshold. And I don't know that we can ever write an objective threshold. And so I would say, let there be no threshold, let the complaints come as they may. You know, it could be a one-minute consideration, say, no, that doesn't matter. I mean, that would be the end of your job on the defective stapler example. You know, get over it. I don't think we would have any liability or any problem there. On the other hand, I think someday, some very significant revelation may come forward that wouldn't otherwise if the employees didn't have 100% certainty that they were protected from retaliation.
It's a possibility, unfortunately. I've seen work environments, just like Byron mentioned, that it can get bad really quickly. If you have a not, not the best work environment, sometimes even throw unions involved, and you can really tie up your operation.
You know, I, I'm not at all opposed to, well, as a matter of fact, I'm very much in favor of protection, whistleblower protection, for all the reasons that we've talked about. However, I'm not troubled by the adjectives there. Those are, and I'm not a lawyer, but those are fairly common references and points to, I guess, threshold points perhaps. I mean, substantial danger as opposed to perceived danger. I mean, substantial. And I would agree that not all will agree with those definitions, but they will be adjudicated. And there will be, there will be a resolution to that. And if it's, if it's a bit of a filter, perhaps it's good, and I doubt that it would be retarding legitimate complaint made, but I doubt. And again, if, you know, our professionals have written it in this way in conjunction with ordinary law, it seems to be reasonable enough, from my perspective. Your complaint's not withstand, you know, appreciate that.
As far as who wrote it, you know, the financial incentives for an insurance organization is to limit their exposure. And so they're wanting to create an out on somebody who is not given whistleblower protection, and they can say, that was not a gross waste of money, it was a slightly less than gross waste of money. If that was not a substantial danger, it was an almost substantial danger. It invites litigation, I think. Words like that invite litigation. If you have a bright line that just says you can bring any complaint of waste or threat of danger, that's a nice bright line, and everyone understands it. And any additional workload that that'll put on management could down rogue, be much more than made up for by savings from something that someone was confident enough to bring forward.
So with that, we have a motion on the floor to table, moved and seconded. Do we need a role call on this? Do we just need a?
A role call. And I'm guessing it's probably going to be a divided vote, so you might want to do a role call.
Yeah, let's just do a role call.
Counselor Carey?
No.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
Counselor Shekel?
No.
Counselor Sobernagle?
No.
Counselor Stanky?
Yes.
So the table, or the motion fails, three to two?
Mr. Mayor, just for information, I just looked this up again. This is from the, oh, which website is it? It's, I think it's Bureau of Labor and Industries. From the state website, the 2009 legislature, whistleblowers, employees who report illegal activity by their employers. It goes on to say that perhaps public employees from taking, employers from taking action against or prohibiting employees from responding to legislative requests, disposing information the employee believes is evidence of violation of laws, disposing evidence of mismanagement, gross waste, or abuse of authority, or reporting public endangerment resulting from an action by a public employee. It goes on, it looks like some of these adjectives do come out. It goes on, it looks like some of these adjectives do come out of the state statutes, so coordinate state policy with the state law. I can't say that it's a direct quote, but I see these adjectives on the Brown &amp; Bulleye website. Yeah, so I did hear substantial and specific danger to public health or safety resulting from any action, gross misuse or waste of public resources.
I think we all probably know what an employee can report. What I'd like to see is what's retaliation? What constitutes retaliation? If it's just termination?
And if it's any adverse...
Yeah, and that is here too. It's, well, it's in state, that also really aligns with state statute. And there is a state law that declares it to be an unlawful employment practice. This ties in with unlawful employment practice law at the state level, for an employer to discharge, demote, suspend, or in any manner discriminate or retaliate against an employee was very broad. And so where you want to find that is in basically the body of law that has interpreted this statute. So there is, there's no clear definition. It was written, I think, intending to be pretty broad because retaliation can come in a lot of shapes and sizes. So it really is any adverse action, discharge, demotion, suspend, or any discrimination or retaliation.
Okay, and then ultimately, who would...
Yeah, if I can add to that, it's gotten even broader than that. Now, even if other employees in the office don't like that that person took the action because they don't agree with it, and like, they don't invite them to lunch anymore, that can be considered retaliation, there's actually case law out.
Or all the staples are counted.
And to answer your question, who decides again, if a state law, if an employee feels that they've been retaliated against, they have an unlawful employment claim that they filed with the Bureau of Labor and Industry, they investigate to determine whether that constitutes retaliation. And if the employee or the employer disagrees, then the next step is court, is the courts. It ultimately can, you know, be months or years later when the final determination is made whether that was retaliation.
And maybe one level, internally, if we had something come up, then I would be instructing whatever department that was related to that hold harmless initially, you know, do not do anything, I mean, I would be very strict with that. But then, yes, at some point, if someone feels like they still aren't being treated properly, they've got other evidence.
And just one more question, how will employees be notified?
We're going to send it around to everybody.
Everybody will see it, okay. And then what are you, what will be the response if employees have questions and say, "I don't think this goes far enough"?
Hopefully, take their feedback.
Okay. Is there a possibility of amending this in the future?
Oh, no, it's just a policy.
Okay, all right, okay.
Just one question that was still hanging out there. Where does this language about the warrants come from, the fourth bullet point?
Yeah, I'm not sure where specifically that comes from.
I just wondered, there's a law that says people with warrants can't receive city services or something like that. I've never heard of that.
Yeah, I've not heard of that.
Because of specificity. Yeah, because if, yeah, that would be interesting, that's already been dealt with in the vote on paperwork.
All right, so now we're back to the original motion, which was moved and seconded. Are we ready for roll call vote on that, folks?
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
Counselor Sobernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Shinko?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Schermer?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes, and at this point, are there any counselor comments? There are none? Do we have the motion to adjourn?
What? Oh, the work session.
Yeah, we're adjourning the regular session, so then we can go to work session.
Yeah, I move in during the work session.
Our turn. Did you not get the...
Sorry.
So now we'll, right from here, we'll meet in the back for the work session.
Yes.
I guess we should say, all in favor of adjournment?